I'm going to call this meeting of the Chelmsford Select Board to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the power of which stands one nation under our command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And just for the record, Board Member Carrada is absent this evening. We'll start with our public service announcements. We have Latasha Dixon here from the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee.
Thank you for that. So I'm Latasha Dixon, right now so she and her, and I'm here on behalf of the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee to invite you to our next event, which is on Wednesday, September 29th, from 7:00 PM until 10:00 PM at the Chelmsford Performing Arts Center, at Chelmsford Public High School. This film follows 12 students as they explore race and racism over the course of a year. It is a film that is a documentary of how they felt as individuals, some of the conversations that they had about race and racism and systems of racism. Ultimately, these individuals gain a better understanding and clarity of race, and they also learn how to talk to each other and learn to listen for the purpose of understanding. We invite you to this free event. It's a 90-minute film, and there will be followed up with a 90-minute discussion with the film's director. She's flying into Boston to meet with us here in Chelmsford. This is your opportunity to come out and learn about race, racism, discrimination. This is a continuation of a Black Lives Matter vigil that occurred last year on the town common, where lots of residents came out to support that event, followed up by the listening session that the Select Board had, where you guys opened up the floor to talk about diversity. So this is a continuation of that discussion. We invite the public out. Please bring your questions, bring your open mind. This particular company does these presentations all across the country. They have a lot of experience, and we welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you, Latasha. Okay. Ken, do you want to do our next?
Sure. So the next two public service announcements are regards to Select Board Traffic Listening Session. So we're going to have two sessions, one on October 7th and one on October 13th. We invite all to come and give input on the traffic issues that are affecting the town of Chelmsford. The first session is going to be at the Senior Center, 75 Grotton Road, on October 7th at 6:30 PM up in North Chelmsford. The second Listening Session will be at the Center School Cafeteria at 84 Bill Ricker Road, again, same time, 6:30 on October 13th. If you cannot attend these but you wish to provide input, please email your concerns to the Town Manager's Office at TMoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we're at the Public Input segment of our agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? Just give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Vivian Mall over on Maple Road, and I'm here on behalf of the Dog Park Advisory Committee. Just wondering if we're going to be allowed to ask questions during the discussion of 54 Richardson Road, because I got a few Dog Park-related things based on that attachment that was in your packet.
Does the Board have any objection to letting them speak, then? We can do it during that Agenda item, Vivian.
Fair enough, thank you.
Anyone else? Sharice?
Yes, hi. I'm Sharice Latmore, 311 Pine Hill Road, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to, I just had to, at behalf of the working group for the DIC, Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, I just wanted to, I was one of the supporters and organizers as a working group for the Day of Peace on the common that took place on Saturday, along with Susan McKinnon, our Chairperson Lauren Cochran, as well as Tricia Duris. So I wanted to just take this opportunity to just thank the community for coming out and really supporting this wonderful event. We had a beautiful day with a lot of activities, dancing for peace, singing for peace, speaking for peace, and I also just wanted to thank Chief Spinney, Lieutenant Colin Spence, our Select Board member, Pat Wojcisz, who came out, Representative Van O'Howard, our Chelmsford High School students, Rob Cunningham, Adam Post, and Grace Matson, as well as Mr. Tom Peterson, Kathleen Kennivan, and the Facilities Department, Joan Coyne at the First Parish Church, Susan Gates and the CCA, the Journey Church, and the Chelmsford Library, Public Library. And it was, I could be remiss to also all the volunteers and the people who came out to support this wonderful day and this event. And I had the, I was so happy that my daughter, Alexandria Latmore, who was a Chelmsford High School, who is a Chelmsford High School alum, she happened to be in town and came to support the event, and she shared with me later what it meant to her. So I asked her if she would come on to share her experience of being a Chelmsford High graduate and coming back to her town to see what that day meant, because it was just wonderful to see. And so Lexi, if you don't mind, I would like to introduce my daughter, Lexi Latmore.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Lexi Latmore. When I lived in Chelmsford, I was also at 311 Pine Hill Road. I'm calling in from Manhattan, New York, right now. I am a proud graduate of Biem Elementary School, Murdoch Middle School, Parker Middle School, and a 2010 graduate of Chelmsford High School. And, you know, I think growing up as an African-American woman in Chelmsford in a time where there was not as much of a colorful array of diversity in the town was very isolating for me in many ways, despite my involvement in the Theater Guild and sports and activities. And I think within the past year, with, you know, from 2020 to now, with the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee forming, we have seen just an array of incredible activities that they have put on that have really meant a lot to me from afar. But I think being able to actually experience the Day of Peace on Saturday was very emotional for me. Seeing little kids running around with rainbow flags and just the beautiful representation of a number of cultures, everyone getting up to learn a classical or contemporary Indian dance together, these are ways that we come together as community. And I think for the first time, I really felt like, huh, Chelmsford is, I've always known that Chelmsford is a special place, but have wondered, is it a special place that I could also continue to feel included in? Would my children feel included in? And seeing the incredible turnout on Saturday, the beautiful weather, and the ways that everyone supported one another and celebrated our differences by coming together, really for the first time made me feel like it would be special to come back here, to return here, to raise a family here. And to be honest, I had not felt that sentiment before, not out of malice for the town, but just out of concern that, you know, my offspring would experience some of the isolation that I did growing up. So I just want to say a really big thank you to the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, to the committee that organized the Day of Peace, and to the Select Board, just a big kudos to you for forming this group and for supporting it. I hope that it continues. Again, I graduated 10 years ago, and to think about how much can change and blossom in a decade is really exciting to think about what we'll be discussing and the ways we'll be coming together, not only tomorrow, but in 2030 and beyond. So thank you so much for letting me share that, and just know that that day was very impactful to me and many, many others. And I wish you peace and love as you continue to organize towards a more equitable, sustainable, and really, really magical Chelmsford. Thank you.
Thank you, Lexi. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Committee Vacancies.
So for Committee Vacancies, as of September 27, 2021, Arts and Technology Education Fund Committee is looking for one three-year term. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. CCA Advisory Committee, two one-year terms. The Center Village Master Plan Implementation Committee has one one-year term. Commissions on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has two one-year terms. Aging Council on Aging, one three-year term, and five associate member positions are available. Cultural Council, two three-year terms. Holiday Decorating Committee, one one-year term. The Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome to one-year terms. Permanent Building Committee, one unexpired three-year term. Public Celebrations Committee, five one-year terms. Recycling Committee, one one-year term. The Tree Committee has one unexpired three-year term and one three-year term. If you're interested in serving on any town board or committee, please complete online application available on the town website, or if you need more information, you can contact the Town Manager's Office. The phone number is 978-250-5202, and the website is TMoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next, we have licenses. The first one is the roadside vendor license for Chelmsford Youth Baseball. Do we have anyone who would like to speak to that?
Good evening, my name is Mike Donahue. I'm here representing Chelmsford Youth Baseball. With me is Bob Vecchione. He represents the Travis Roy Foundation, who previously ran the Christmas tree sale at that location. So the running of the tree sale is going to transition from the Travis Roy Foundation to Chelmsford Youth Baseball. As the passing of Travis, the foundation is going to start to ramp down their activities, and the league is going to take this opportunity to come back into the fundraising aspect through trees.
Okay. Do we have any questions? No? We'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the roadside vendor license for Chelmsford Youth Baseball located at 75 Chelmsford Street.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we have anyone here for the Chelmsford Lodge of Elks?
I know Lisa Catalano was on.
Oh, yep.
Yes, I am here.
Could you just give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Lisa Catalano. My address is 10A Beaville Lake Road in Derry, New Hampshire.
And this is just a standard change of officers?
We're doing a, we have a change of manager, a change of officers, and a corporate name change as well.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have one question. Paul, you might be able to answer it. I know the hours of operation for weekdays, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Is that, do we, I thought we pulled back on that a while ago, or not?
You mean the 2:00 AM?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we called doing it for clubs.
Okay, maybe it was just restaurants.
Yeah, I think it was just reg.
Okay.
You okay, Ken? Any other questions? Now I'll take a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the change of corporate name, change of manager, and change of officers on the all alcohol beverages club license for the Chelmsford Lodge of Elks, number 2310, located at 300 Littleton Road, Chelmsford, Mass.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep. So just for the record, George Dixon is going to recuse himself from the next topic.
Bless you.
Okay. Paul, do you?
Yeah, we have Paul McKinley joining us from Western Sampson Engineers, providing the follow-up and really nearing the deadline for the submission of the mediation plan for 54 Richardson Road. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul. Paul, we have your presentation available to go through as you speak this evening.
Great, yes. If you wanted to pull it up, I will mention right off the bat that I've brought some colleagues with me to help answer any questions and actually give some of the presentation tonight. We have Frank Getchel, hydrologist, who's been working on this right from the get-go, and also, I don't see him on yet, but Blake Martin may also make an appearance and help answer any questions that may come up. So with that, I guess I'll set the stage real briefly, if you wanted to bop to the next slide, and I can just briefly rehash where we're at with the investigation. So at 54 Richardson Road, we have the PFAS impacts, as I mentioned at the last Select Board meeting, and our June 2021 sampling event, which is our most recent, the concentrations in some of the watering wells, specifically MW1, which was a pre-existing well, has been steadily increasing and has reached a maximum concentration on the site of 952 parts per trillion. So we suspect there is a primary source near the eight-bay garage structure with also a potential area of impact in the Dog Park. And I will, I did, I was on earlier and I heard the question, so I just wanted to address it right up front, that we also had noted that the Dog Park was being used, and one of the things of particular concern was there was an irrigation well over at the Dog Park. We did immediately take the irrigation well off of service, and we actually did do a superficial testing program of soil out in the Dog Park. We took four samples back on June 15, 2021, and the results of that superficial soil investigation to ensure that there was no sort of undue exposure to people using the parks, people and our four-legged furry friends, and happy to report that all those soil results were actually below MAS DEP's most stringent standards. So to the question, is it safe to be using the Dog Park? We actually did collect superficial soil data, and it does indicate that the park is still okay to use. And of course, the primary receptor we're trying to protect here is the North Chelmsford Water District. So with that, I'll actually pass it over to Frank Getchel. Frank, I don't know if you're on, and wanted to walk through the treatment system design that we have.
Paul, before you go there, can I just ask a question about the slide that you're on?
Yes, please do.
So you say suspected primary onsite source area. Is there a process you're going through to verify that, like that there is a source there and what it is?
Sure. I mean, you know, there's always some uncertainty, but actually, if you actually move to the next slide, I can show you from the contribution, concentration distribution, it does appear that there is a source or an area of elevated concentrations of PFAS between the MW1 area, which is just north of the eight-bay garage, and it extends down to the 102S area, which is right on Richardson Road, if you slid, yep, right in there. So right in those points there, that is the, you know, area of elevated PFAS that we're detecting. And in our current site conceptual model or hypothesis of what's going on there is that there were some historic operations in the town garage that was released to the environment and resulting in that elevated area of PFAS detections. We did, I think, we discussed soil a little bit, so there were a couple soil detections in and around the structure, but primarily, this is a groundwater issue with PFAS. And again, the hotspot appears to be originating around the structure, and of course, is migrating towards the North Chelmsford Water District, so.
Are you confident that it's past tense?
Well, in our, it's a good question. So in talking with Steve and the DPW personnel and other potential sources, like the fire operations, and really looking at the historical operations of the DPW, we're not identifying anything that's an ongoing source, at least from our observations and from our research into the site. So that would be the answer, is we have not identified anything ongoing. It appears to be historic, you know, related to potentially historic operations. We have not seen anything current.
Okay. So it's, you think it's related to historic operations and the levels continue to escalate?
And that certainly is the, what we're tracking here with the data, and we are, you know, only, you know, months into this investigation, so, you know, we have a fairly good handle on the nature and extent, but the temporal component of this is one that time will bear out as we do more seasonal monitoring. We don't know if, you know, the 952 is an absolute maximum, or if there is, you know, some, you know, pocket of PFAS that's continuing to release into the groundwater. That's something that the temporal, you know, aspect of this investigation, we will get into. And of course, we are operating under an immediate response action, so our timelines have been truncated by MAS DEP, and we're trying to move very quickly to meet their deadlines. But I guess to answer your query, that, you know, the temporal component of our monitoring will tell the tale there of whether the, you know, system is, is it in equilibrium? Is the 952 the maximum concentration, or is it still, you know, an ongoing source of PFAS that's contributing to the groundwater impacts that we're seeing?
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess with that, I'll turn this over to Frank.
Good evening. Thanks, Paul. So as Paul mentioned, we've been, Paul and I have been assisting Paul with some of the aspects of the hydrogeology, as well as an understanding of how the PFAS at the DPW site is moving, and using that kind of information to help identify the appropriate remedial activity to get this cleaned up and to preclude it from continuing to move. So as you, Paul went through the first slide, it kind of lays out where we are, and this slide gives you a current idea of the distribution of the total PFAS six. So in Massachusetts, we have six PFAS compounds that currently we have requirements for as far as MCLs. And any of the flagged areas that are yellow represent that. As Paul mentioned, the bulk and the highest concentrations are in that area that are on the right-hand side of the building, of the DPW yard. So as a result, you know, when we start talking about source area, that's where we're keying in on. It's a pretty thorough understanding of the hydrogeology at the site. There's a numerous number of monitor wells, and then we have actually other monitor wells that are off-site. The general groundwater flow direction is from the lower right-hand corner of this map towards the upper left-hand corner, and that occurs under natural conditions, though some of the information we have now shows that there is a little bit of influence that we're seeing from pumping up towards the North Chelmsford well field. So with that said, we've been keeping that kind of an understanding of what's going on here to help us identify the appropriate way to, basically to reduce the mass of the contamination. As Paul said, there's not much in the soil. It appears to be a groundwater issue. Whenever that release or releases had occurred, that contamination was able to get down into the groundwater. So fortunately, in that sense, that's really what we're targeting when identifying an appropriate remedial effort. Could you go to the next slide, please?
Is that the same one?
Okay, I think that's the same one. Okay, great. So I know Paul had spoke about some of the options that were out there during the last meeting, and based on those discussions, we had identified the pump and treat remedial option to be what we felt the most effective for not only controlling any continued spread of the PFAS, but also to remove the mass. You know, the goal here is to get this stuff out of the ground and get it off-site, so that years from now, it doesn't impact conditions at the site, doesn't impact off-site conditions, and doesn't also impact any future uses of the site that may require some sort of subsurface work, such as laying new buildings, what have you. So what we did was we focused on that area where we saw the highest concentrations. We identified pump and treat, which means we're going to basically put a well that pumps the groundwater that's been impacted by the PFAS. It's going to control it, prevent it from continuing to move off-site. It's going to remove the material that's at the source. We've identified an appropriate treatment system that will take the PFAS out, and then what we're going to do is return the treated water back to the ground. And that treated groundwater that's going back is actually going to serve two purposes. One is it's going to be introduced towards the Richardson Road area. What that does is it pushes any other impacted groundwater that maybe doesn't get captured back towards the recovery well. So again, what we're doing is we're preventing it from spreading across Richardson Road. And what it also does, it is intended to leave the hydro, the groundwater resource in the area whole. We recognize the fact that there is a water supply across the street. We recognize the fact that, you know, there's only a certain amount of water that comes and goes out of that aquifer. So what we're doing here is not only trying to, the attempt is to preclude the contamination, but to kind of keep the resource whole as it currently is. The treatment that's been designed is based on the concentrations that we have seen along Richardson Road at MW1, and I believe that's MW102 area where we've seen the highest concentrations. And what it does is it goes through a train of three different levels of treatment. There's one to remove particulates, whether it be iron, iron oxides, any kind of sediment that gets pulled in from the well. Then it goes to a carbon unit that will remove pretty much all of the PFAS compounds that are being targeted here, the PFAS six. And then there's a polishing unit that consists of resin. And what we're doing here is, it's a safety factor. These are going to run in series, so there's actually backup, so as one starts to get exhausted, the other one picks up the slack. That gives us time to be able to change out the material, put in fresh material over the course of the system being in place. The intent is to have this PNID for the pump and treat system to be part of the IR array that Paul mentioned earlier, and the intent here is to have it ready for the plan, which is due on October 11, 2021. Could we go to the next slide, please? One more. Here we go. So in essence, what this capture zone here is, and this is conceptual, obviously, part of the overall design of the system will involve the testing of the well and evaluating using actual data. What I mean by that is water level responses in the wells that are in the vicinity of where the proposed recovery well is. I don't know who, if anybody could, you could show us where the well is. You can see there's a blue, I don't have a control on my end, so I don't think I can do anything.
A blue what?
Keep going, keep going towards Richardson Road. You should see, come on back, you should see a blue circle. Yes, that's it, perfect. So that's approximately where this proposed recovery well would go, and that, the location is based on the actual hydrogeologic conditions we know for the aquifer system. This aquifer has been pretty well studied as part of the development of not only the North Chelmsford Water District, but also Chelmsford's wells that are further down over in the Cold Brook, Cold Spring Brook area, part of the aquifer. So there's a lot of available information, and with that, we were able to establish the kind of range of rates that would be required to control the PFAS on-site. What you see here is 100 gallons per minute. It's projecting the extent of influence, how far out. You can see that we encompassed that entire source area that Paul was mentioning and describing that, we were able to establish the kind of range of rates that would be required to control the PFAS on-site. What you see here is 100 gallons per minute. It's projecting the extent of influence, how far out. You can see that we encompassed that entire source area that Paul was mentioning and describing earlier. As I said to you earlier, the whole point here is to remove the mass of the contamination. We just don't want to take it, fix it into the ground, and then somebody has to deal with it later on. So once this comes out, goes to the treatment system, every time the treatment system is changed out, that captured PFAS goes away. It's disposed of and destroyed at a licensed facility far away from Chelmsford. And so as a result, as we continue the source to move, we're taking that out. And at some point, we get to the criteria for cleanup, which I believe we're looking at five parts per trillion. Paul mentioned to you how high we are. And the current cleanup, or the current MCL for drinking water is 20. So we're going way below that. And to be honest with you, there's a pretty good chance, we're envisioning that we're probably going to be going even below that. So the system is proven. It's used in numerous other locations. Just to put a couple out there, it's being used in Devens. We're using it up in Portsmouth, where we have extremely higher order of magnitude levels of PFAS. And it's a very effective system. Once we actually start to do the testing and the installation of the recovery well, we'll actually be able to refine this capture zone. The well is being designed to pump upwards of 200 gallons per minute. So we have a safety factor built in there for the control. And we feel that this is definitely the best way to go with respect to the remediation of the PFAS. And then lastly, we have two more slides here. This gives you an idea of the schematic. And what we've done here is, again, it's a concept. It shows you approximately where the well is. The well pumps into a structure that will be attached to the front of the DPW building. The intent is to keep stuff out of the traffic areas. The building can still be used for its intended purposes. Once we go through the treatment train, the piping and valving is set up in such a way that the water will then flow via gravity to two recharge basins. We show just one of them, conceptually where it is. The other one will actually be to the north of there. We're envisioning based on the nature of the material, the soil that we've seen. It's relatively high permeability. So each of these, basically there'll be, there'll be trenches that do not encounter the groundwater surface. They're going to go down probably between six and eight feet. They'll have slotted pipe in them, backfilled with clean crushed gravel. And the water from the treatment system via gravity then will be able to go to each of these. And that 100 to 200 GPM will be distributed evenly between the two. And that, as I said earlier, will be used to do two things. It will be able to recharge the aquifer so there is minimum loss or impact to the resource. And it will also push back any contamination that's still residual in those areas back towards the recovery well. I think there's one more.
Actually, two more.
And this gives you an idea of the components. Pump, treat, reinject. There'll be a single submersible pump. We're going to have a variable frequency pump on that. And the intent there is to also be energy conscious. So this is a more efficient way to pump the well. It allows us to use minimal valving to regulate that flow from 100 gallons per minute up to 200 gallons per minute. The extraction recovery well is going to be screened in the bottom part of the aquifer. The aquifer here is only about 40 feet deep. We're looking at probably about a five-foot screen. So the rest of the well casing will penetrate through the aquifer up to grade. We're going to finish the well in some kind of a vaulted-type structure. Before, that way is out of, basically, it's out of sight. It doesn't provide any kind of visual obstructions. It'll be out of any of the traffic areas, again, just to maintain it and to prevent it from being damaged. Our goal is going to be less than five parts per trillion. As I said to you earlier, the MCL 6 is 20 for the PFAS 6. We'll have bag filters because we're anticipating that there might be some issues with higher iron. The bag filters will deal with any kind of sediment and iron oxide. They'll do the bulk of the work as the, as the recovered water goes into the system. Before it goes into the carbon units, where we envision, not only will the PFAS be removed, but there also probably will still be some pickup of some iron. And then when we go into the resin, basically, the resin is considered a polishing unit. Anything that doesn't make it past the carbon, which we don't envision really is going to be much of anything, will be dealt with at the resin level. And then, as I said, we'll have two of these onsite recharge trenches. And I already, I think, said what the goals of those will be. But next. Okay. And this is more of a schematic. This is the kind of information that's going to go into the PNID that Paul mentioned earlier as part of the IRA. Much more detailed. It's a schematic. We outline the volumes of the vessels, the dimensions, the actual layout, the valving. And, you know, this shows it not as it would actually be laid out at the site, but it gives you an idea of the process by which the PFAS will be removed from the recovered water. Last. And I believe Paul, I think, presented some of these numbers the last time. This is just to kind of put them out there. These are the capital costs for the installation of the system. There's an annual operation and maintenance. This includes the change out of the media I mentioned to you earlier, the carbon. There'll be annual sampling with respect to the performance of the system. This is independent of other types of monitoring, I think, that Paul can elaborate on with respect to the monitor wells. And then upfront cost regarding designing and permitting of the system. Gives you an idea of the overall. And I think at this point, we were approximately upwards of about, oh, close to $500,000 for the overall project. We're assuming a 20-year operation schedule for this to recover the PFAS. We're anticipating, though, that we're being conservative in that number. So obviously, as soon as we get to that, that point where we're seeing on the network of Sentinel wells, that we're meeting our requirements for the, for the MCL, you know, we can start to actually talk about what the actual long-term duration of pumping will be. But anyway, we felt 20 years is pretty conservative for that estimate for now. And I think that's it. Paul, do you want to pick up on anything?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the only thing I'll add is, is this, I did have a conversation with Mass DEP about the, about this, as it's, you know, going to DEP for their approval. And there's certainly a look on the pump and treat option as favorable. Certainly a tried and true technology. And, and I guess, you know, they, they thought it was wholly appropriate, I guess, is the way to leave it.
Vivian, do you have any more inputs from the Dog Park?
Hi. Vivian Merrill with the Dog Park Advisory Committee again. On page two of your presentation, you make note of a secondary source potentially in the Dog Park. Where is that located? Like, where in the park? And is there anything we can do to, like, not exacerbate any problems? Or how do we be good neighbors in all of this?
Sure. So, and just to back up a little bit, we, the town requested that we actually do a geophysical survey of the entire property to try and identify sources, which we did. And we followed up with a, you know, test bidding, evaluation of the geophysical results. And we did find 50 drums, I think we reported that on the last time, and various other man-made, you know, objects, any one of which could be a source. I remember we saw a big brush and, you know, other things which, you know, could have had PFAS impacts on it. So when I say there's a source, potentially a secondary source of PFAS, we're pulling that off of the data that came from MW104. So that's a well, if we actually backed up in the presentation. Yeah, so that's, it's right in the center of those four at the top of the Dog Park. It's the one in the middle there. And so we had concentrations there in the 500 parts per trillion range in our initial sampling. And you can see it did reduce in our secondary sampling, but still elevated at 177. So that's where we're, we're looking at that as another elevated area. And you can see the, you know, the concentrations, we followed up afterwards and put those wells, MW115, 16, 17, 18, all the way around it to see if, if that was, you know, a contiguous area of elevated concentration. It wasn't. It looked like it was just a spot. And it really could be caused by any, anything that's buried out there, or something that could have happened in the past. So, so with that, we did explore how, just to, I guess, elaborate on my answer, how does that presence of PFAS, and I was asked this question by the select board early on in the project, you know, does that represent a risk to people using the park? And again, we collected superficial data. We actually collected four samples, but each sample was actually a composite of many different points. So I believe it was, you know, somewhere between 16 and 20 individual points in the park. We actually sampled for PFAS concentrations in this official soil. And, and again, all of those results were well below Mass DEP's most stringent soil standards for PFAS 6. So based on the data that we have, the soil, it's okay to become in contact with. There's no contaminants were present in this official soil. And of course, the water is another issue that we're, you know, we're addressing, but that is at depth. So not something that somebody would come in contact with. And certainly, it's treated as it goes through the North Chelmsford Water District, you know, before it's delivered to customers. So.
So at this point, there's no plan on doing any major excavation to find out what's under the grounds or anything like that?
So we, so the geophysical survey is essentially like an X-ray. You know, we use ground penetrating radar and EM electromagnetic techniques to identify where these anthropogenic or man-made objects or potential sources of PFAS may be. So we did the survey of the entire site. And, and the survey identified what is termed as anomalies or potential reflectors that could represent sources. And then with the DPW's assistance, we went out and dug on each one of these anomalies, each one of the major ones that were flagged. And this is how we found the 50 drums and other material, which we removed and hauled away from the site. So we did do a pretty comprehensive source investigation and removal as part of that. So if that answers your question, I, you know, we're pretty far down the road there, we're actually investigating what's in the subsurface and removing anything we think is suspect.
Okay. Because maybe I'm just confused, because I thought those drums were removed like 20 years ago.
Ah, it's a very good point. So there were some initial drums that were moved, I believe that were in 2004. And, and as part of our activities from Mass DEP, they actually, since we didn't know what the drums were, they asked us to go back and take a look at that area as, as a potential suspect source of PFAS. Again, we didn't know what was in those drums. And PFAS wasn't a thing at the time, so they didn't, you know, sample for it. And so we actually went back and looked at that area. Those are representative, if you go back to the figure, it's in the southeastern corner there. It's MW112 and 105. Those wells were installed in the drum area. So we actually went back and started evaluating in the drum area. We actually did find another full drum out there, which we subsequently removed properly after evacuating the contents. And that sort of, you know, led into this more site-wide investigation. So, which again, you know, identified dozens and dozens of these drums, which anyone, any one of which could be a potential source of PFAS. So we removed them. And, and again, we're left with the concentrations which depicted on this map, addressing to the ground.
So Vivian, just so you, about six months ago, we looked at this and had this entire site scanned.
Right. Yeah. Because one of the irrigation lines got damaged when that scan was done.
From the scan?
Well, from, from some digging that was done.
Yeah, okay.
That pipe hasn't been fixed yet. We haven't been allowed to use the irrigation. So that was going to be my next question. It's like, as you go forward, are we ever going to be able to use that irrigation system again? Because...
And I can answer, I mean, so the irrigation well, we shut down because there is PFAS-impacted water, and we don't want to spread it all over the park and make it unsafe for people to use. So we did collect the data. It is safe for people to use. But unfortunately, one of the, one of the problems that we have here is there is the impacted, you know, PFAS water, and we don't want to spread it around. So until further notice, the irrigation well is offline until we can, you know, get our remediation system up and running and hopefully reduce the concentrations to where it's safe to use the irrigation well again.
And based on your original estimate, that could be in 20 years. So we're effectively down and out for that irrigation system. That's what you're telling me, right?
Yeah, it could be an extended number of years, absolutely.
Paul, a question for you. Is there a way, or is there a possibility to drill a separate irrigation well, like, on the north point of the site where you know that the PFAS are low, that they could draw from? Or is that not recommended?
I suppose we could do that. But, you know, if you go back and look at the figure with all the yellow on it, I mean, the distribution of PFAS is pretty widespread over the site. I think we touched on this at the last meeting. There is some sort of background or regional PFAS issues. You may have read in the news that PFAS is pretty pervasive, you know, seems like everywhere these days. So we could look at installing another source of irrigation water on other areas of the site, like, you know, all the way to the easternmost extent, for instance. But then you'd have to pipe it over. So it's something we could look at, you know, from the, if the town would like us to, as a potential option.
Right. Your other option is to tap into town water and then put an irrigation well in, I mean, a irrigation meter? Or I don't know how you would do it.
I guess, I thought that wasn't allowed for irrigation. It couldn't be on town water. Which, I mean, it is what it is. I understand that. It's just, from a planning perspective and the future of the Dog Park, do we have to look at something else besides growing grass? Do we need to change the surface? And, you know, nobody is a real big fan of covering the park with, entirely with wood chips or rocks or anything like that. But if grass is not going to be an option, I mean, it's going to be tough to grow. We've had volunteer groups for years fight with how to keep grass grown in that park because it's hugely popular. There's, there's lots of people and dogs walking on it every day. It's, it's been a struggle for reasons that have nothing to do with PFAS. But it's like, all right, if the grass, grass growing becomes not viable, you know, what other options could we look at for ground cover? So it doesn't become a mud bowl.
Paul, are they not allowed to use town water?
Drainage there and everything else.
Because you're in water bans.
No, but I mean, you can use it when there's no watering ban on, though, couldn't you? You just have to stop when it goes to odd days or...
Those are the times that they'd want to be watering the park. That's all I know.
Right. I mean, we just put in a whole bunch of trees, and we did the watering by hand, and we got it done. And I'm assuming over time, we've had a nice rainy season, which helped out a lot. But moving forward, it's, it's just something that we need to think about, because it could be a dust bowl. I mean, we've severe rain. We used to get a lot of flooding over there. That seems to have been mitigated a little bit over time. But it's, it's, you know, like I said, I don't want to sit there and say, all right, we want to pave a whole walking path over there if that's going to exacerbate the situation, which it might, because pavement is what it is. But I, I don't know. It's just, like I say, it's just looking for options for what we can do at the park to continue to make it usable.
We're probably not going to solve that tonight.
Yeah, something we'll look into, yeah.
Do you have other questions for Paul McKinley, Vivian?
Uh, no, that was, that was probably about it. It's, you know, basically finding out, you know, where the other section is, and is there a second well proposed for that in the future if things get worse? You know, stuff like that. How to keep the user safe and not create a panic. And basically, just don't do anything to mess up what you guys are doing.
Right. Okay.
And I will say, one of the things that we might be able to look at is actually once the treated groundwater, there may be a way to, you know, pipe it over there and maybe utilize it for irrigation. So something we could look at in our design.
Oh, I mean, that also comes with a cost that we'll have to figure out.
It does.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Vivian.
All right. Thank you very much, guys. Have a good night.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Bruce Harper, are there any inputs from the North Chelmsford Water Department?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Bruce Harper, the North Chelmsford Water District. Just to mention, just to answer Vivian's question really quick, there is public water going into that building. And we do not forbid them using it as long as they do it, like Ken said, during the water ban hours. And I did talk to Steve Vianli about that. And I told him there wouldn't be an injection from, to use public water from the building as long as it's used properly. So I just wanted to clarify that point. And I'd like to actually move my, Paul Howard, he wants to speak, Tater and Howard from our engineering firm, and I'll concede.
Just give us your name and role for the record, please.
Hi, Madam Chairman. This is Paul Howard from Tater and Howard, with the Water District's water consultant. And we had a couple of questions or comments on the presentation. At the last presentation, Paul had talked about two options, an institute, constituent treatment option and the pump and treat option. And we had written a letter saying that maybe this should be some consideration for looking at both of those options. Because, I mean, if you look at the capture zone with the pump and treat, it's not encompassing that area up by the Dog Park where there is... that area up by the dog park where there is, I think it was up to a hundred and seventy-seven parts per trillion. Just so everybody knows that, you know, when we're talking about the hotspot, you know, by the building, that's fifty times, fifty times, the MCL for drinking water. And that water is going towards the North Chelmsford Water District wells, which are their sole source of water for the entire district. So we have grave concerns over, you know, when this is going to be implemented, how it's going to be implemented. And we have a treatment system in place with the North Chelmsford Water District, but it wasn't designed to remove PFAS. It was designed for chloride removal. It is currently removing PFAS, but we've extended the carbon in a much earlier timeframe than would have been done because it is taking out the PFAS that is in the water. So, well, we have a lot of concerns about the timing and whether we're going to capture everything with this treatment system, and should we be looking at maybe doing some institute treatment up in some places of the site and then capturing and treating the water at the highest levels.
Paul or...
And then we also, so one thing, Paul, if you could address, when you're injecting the water into the ground, are we going to cause any mounding that will change any of the drainage patterns? Because Coal Spring Brook is right there, and we don't want to push water that is now going to discharge into the brook and then come by the wells and maybe carry contamination to the wells quicker.
Sure, maybe I should jump in and answer some of the questions. So as far as the treatment option and using multiple options, I think that's, you know, still potentially on the table. And in my discussion with Mass DEP, I think they believe, as do we, that starting off with a pump and treat as the primary means, get that installed and operating, see how the concentrations fare and how successful hydraulic capture works. But the, one of the advantages of the pump and treat is that will allow us, like, if necessary, if, you know, polishing or another remedial method such as injections is necessary, the pump and treat, the presence of the pump and treat will certainly aid us in any other remedial option that we can do, in that it would help us capture, you know, what we're injecting into the ground. One of the concerns I think I raised last time is the injection and the material that we are injecting, and how that potentially affects the North Chelmsford Water District and the water supply. So with that pump and treat already in operation, it would assist in, if additional remediation is necessary, to really provide the hydraulic control that would be needed to help ensure, you know, protecting of the Water District wells. But at this time, for the IRA activity, I think, you know, we're proposing only to do the pump and treat system, which DEP thought was a prudent measure, get it operating, see how the concentrations fare and the hydraulic control. And again, it allows us for additional options if necessary. And as far as the mounding, I don't know, Frank, do you want to take the mounding question?
Sure. Paul, we, you know, when we put those trenches in, again, this was for the conceptual design as part of the PNID. But, yeah, there will be a mound, but the transmissivity of that aquifer is so high that it's not going to be a significant one, and we're going to, that's why we're going to also split up the spreading of the water. And keep in mind, you know, as you pointed out, too, the water's going to be clean. It's going to have gone through treatment first. So anything that gets pushed out with the mound is going to be less than that five PPT. And presumably, it might even be even lower than that. But any of the water that goes back to the recovery well, the intent there is to push anything that we may miss, move it back towards the recovery well and help it out. And then anything that goes in the other direction is intended to just continue on with the gradient. That's why also we want to try to minimize that rate for the hydraulic control. We start out at a hundred. Again, this is based on information for the aquifer nearby over at the, over at the well field, you know, we use some of those transmissivity values and so forth. And, you know, it's conceivable that we could definitely go two hundred, even three hundred gallons per minute. Not saying that's what we want to do. So I think, as Paul said, the good thing here is that as this gets going, and we're, even as part, upfront, part of the testing, we're going to refine that capture zone based on the rate, because we'll use all those monitor wells that are there, and we'll get an idea actually what we're influencing. And then if we have to tweak it, we can tweak it. You know, one way to tweak it might be if you had to increase the rate. Another might be if there was a need to have another well, or another one might be with respect to, you know, combining it with the injection system. The problem with the institute is it doesn't get rid of the mass. It's there, it's always going to be there. So dealing with that, we felt that that realistically was not the way to go. That's why we kind of coupled the pumping with the recovery wells. And keep in mind, this, and with the recharge basis, excuse me, this is conceptual. So we've got some places to move. We had to put something in here to start getting an idea on the costs and so forth. And as part of the PNID, the treatment system is fine. The actual location, where we're going to go, we have some flexibility as far as that goes.
Anything else?
Is there a timeframe on when you envisioned this pump and treat would start?
I think we're shooting for the six-month timeframe, given that winter is approaching, and a lot of this is, you know, trenching and system installation. So I guess initially, the six-month timeframe is what we were envisioning.
Right. If we can get done sooner, we'll obviously push sooner, but like Paul said, we're, you know, unfortunately going into the poor weather season.
Bruce or Paul, is there anything else? Okay. Anything else from the board? Pat?
I have a couple of questions. I think, Frank, it was you that mentioned about the design and permitting. Is that any local permitting? Is that all from the DEP? Do you have to go through any of the local boards or committees for permits?
I'm going to let Paul respond to that, too, because I think everything comes in underneath the IRA as far as that goes. The only permits that I would be familiar with would be, say, the well drilling permit and some of the testing aspects, but I think Paul has a better handle on the local permits.
Yeah, no, and I touched base with DEP a little bit on this conversation, and obviously it is, you know, a system they're looking to implement fairly quickly. So I think, you know, DEP did not identify any initial, like, permitting at their level. They will review and provide comments, I'm sure, back on our IRA report and approve that specifically. I believe they have, you know, twenty-one days or so to do so, and they've been doing it in a very timely fashion. So other than the DEP approval, I mean, you could envision, you know, potentially some Conservation Commission issues if we're working in a natural resource area. I think we may be just outside of that in our work zone, but really not anticipating much permitting beyond that. But that's part of the design and design phase, really, is to identify anything that may come up, but we're not anticipating much.
Okay, thanks. The other question I have, you mentioned that it would be constructed such it would be unobtrusive to allow the other uses in the, on the property. Is there, what kind of security will there be regarding it?
I've certainly got a fair enough experience with remedial systems, and usually what we'll do is we'll house this in a treatment shed. You know, it is water, so it does, you know, typically you need to, you know, get some heat tracing or something on the pipes to keep them from freezing. But other than, I know the site is secure itself, I know it has a gate, but typically the remediation system and equipment will also be under lock and key in a shed.
Okay, thanks.
One thing I just want to add to that point, and Paul just touched on, all the piping is intended to be underground until it gets into the, into the building. The well's going to be fitted with what's called a pitless adapter, so the pump actually pumps through the casing below the frost line, probably about three, four feet, and then it will make its way over to the treatment shed. So that's what I meant also about being unobtrusive. So we don't have people running over things, stepping on things, and so forth.
So for instance, there may be a building requirement, you know, building department just for the shed, but again, it's a pretty small structure, so.
Okay, that's all I have.
Paul Cohen, I got a third-hand input that somebody thought they saw something that looked like dumping on the site. Do you have any idea what that might have been?
No idea what you're referring to. Is this recent or...
Yeah, I just, okay. It doesn't seem like it makes sense, but, all right. Any other questions or comments?
I think the last question is, where do we go from here? You've got the October eleventh deadline looming. What are the next steps, Paul?
And then it seems like we would owe a very specific cost proposal to our implementation of this remedial option. So I think we've talked about that. If the town wants to move forward with the, you know, the actual implementation, installation of the treatment options, I think we need to get your proposal to do so.
Does the town even get a choice once the DEP reviews it?
Right, then you've got to submit the, you've got to submit the immediate response plan by, you know, in two weeks, right?
Yes.
And what is, what is the turnaround from DEP?
Again, they, they will, I'm sure, probably, as they did on subsequent IRA plans, review and approve and potentially provide comments back on this. Again, approached the conceptual pump and treat option with them, and they were, you know, looked on it very favorably, but they will typically review and approve and send us comments in a twenty-one day period for the IRA.
Okay.
So we need a vote this evening to proceed with the pump and treat system as presented and the submission of the immediate response plan to the DEP.
And Paul, you said the comment about doing that, doing both the pump and treat and the institute. You'd look at how the pump and treat is proceeding and then determine whether you needed to couple in the institute blocking.
I think the DEP would look at it, too.
Yeah, DEP would.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. That was the conversation. Again, it was a, you know, brief one, you know, touching base conceptually, but the way I approached it was start with the pump and treat system, see how effective that system is, collect some data on the hydraulic capture, you know, decreasing concentration, see what's leaving the site. You know, as part of this, we'll be monitoring the well network on a quarterly basis so we can track the decreasing trends. And then if needed, we could always look at, and one of the advantages of the pump and treat system is you could always add on additional treatment measures or even, you know, enhance the current system as designed. But those are all options, but we would look at that after the operation of the system. And DEP agreed with that approach, sort of a stepped approach. Start with the pump and treat, and then if needed, we can keep other options sort of in our back pocket.
Do you have a wording for the motion, or...
I think, I think the motion would be to authorize the submission to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection of the pump and treat remediation system for the PFAS immediate response action plan at fifty-four Richardson Road.
And you support that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And based on everything we've heard over the last several months, this seems to be the way to go. Time will tell, obviously, with the quarterly testing as well as the, you know, implementation of the system.
All right, so I'll make a motion to authorize a submission to the DEP for the pump and treatment, the pump and treat remediation system to be located at fifty-four Richardson Road, Chelmsford, Mass.
Second? Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three in favor, one abstention, and one absent.
Yeah, and that's the only motion, right? This is...
Yeah. Yeah, you don't need anything further from us. Probably Paul will submit for in two weeks. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And for the record, George Dixon is joining the meeting, rejoining the meeting. Okay, Paul?
All right, next on our agenda is, John Potts is here. He's a senior project manager from Weston and Sampson. He's coming to the podium, and this is to discuss the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protections Administrative Consent Order for the Town of Chelmsford as a result of the two thousand twenty March force main break at the Southwell Field Pump Station.
Thank you. Again, as Paul said, my name is John Potts, and I'm with Weston and Sampson Engineers. We're going to talk about the incident that happened at Southwell very briefly, then I'm going to review a description of what an ACOP is, which is an administrative consent order with penalty, and then the summary of the ACOP that was issued to the town, and then we'll just briefly talk about what the next steps are. So if you go to the next slide. Just a project location, the Southwell Field Pump Station itself is in the lower left-hand corner. The Deep Brook runs parallel to it. The softball fields are to the left of the pump station, and the Merrimack River is at the top left-hand corner. Running up the middle of the area is the railroad tracks, the Pan Am tracks, and the pump station, the force main at the Southwell Field Pump Station is what failed back in March twenty twenty. Next slide. This is just a close-up of the pump station showing the Deep Brook immediately adjacent to it. The force main crosses completely under the brook at a depth of about sixteen to eighteen feet deep, which is what led into some of the issues that we had when we found the force main break and we had to repair it. The next slide. This is going to be just a brief summary of the force main break. On March twenty-fourth, it was discovered that wastewater was flowing out of the ground into Deep Brook and also into the Merrimack River. The town brought a contractor in for an emergency repair. It took approximately a week later to actually get a bypass system installed and operational. So on March thirty-first, they were able to turn off all the pumps to the pump station and stop the wastewater flow into the river. Another week later, because we had to start digging back at the pump station, and again, I told you it was sixteen to eighteen feet deep, they found the cause of the failure, which was a hole in the pipe that's shown in that lower picture that was approximately six inches wide. And they repaired it that same day, and the next day, they were able to take the bypass system back offline, and the pump station was returned to normal operation. So the entire incident and discharge happened over approximately a fifteen-day period between March and the beginning of April of twenty twenty.
Okay.
The next slide. The Mass DEP is in charge of, under Mass General Law and under the Code of Mass Regs of variety, I'm not going to go through all the ones that they're responsible for, but they're responsible for, if something happens, obviously in the environment, they have to take action for it. Because wastewater was discharging into a drinking water supply, DEP had no choice but to take action toward the Town of Chelmsford in this incident. Next slide. They have a variety of enforcement responses that they take. They have, what, a notice of noncompliance, an administrative consent order, and then administrative consent order with penalty. A notice of noncompliance is just a simple, basically, it's usually a letter that's given to the town that says, something happened, you have to do something about it. Usually, if they don't do something about it, then it turns into administrative consent order or a consent order with penalty. In Chelmsford's case, unfortunately, because of the discharge of wastewater to a drinking water supply, I quoted the two Mass General Laws that they, that fall under it is. It's the discharge of wastewater to a drinking water supply, and then the bypassing of treatment are the two general laws that fell under it, which caused Chelmsford to fall into the penalty category under the ACO. So it was an ACOP and not just an ACO.
So the other two violations that were cited that are on your chart didn't contribute to the penalty assessment?
No. The penalty assessment is, they have a whole formula that I can't even understand, but they look at the amount of wastewater discharged in, and they put it into a formula, and then it calculates out what they say the fine's going to be.
Okay.
That it all had to do with the discharge of wastewater. Next slide. One thing just, I want to just keep notice is, this wasn't something that could have been predicted by the town. I mean, a force main that deep, a hole of that size, there was nothing Chelmsford could have done in advance of this. However, now that we've seen this, we are going to talk about later on in this presentation, future measures that can, the town can take to avoid, hopefully, this happening again.
But the, so the, where did, the other two violations that were in the order that weren't related to the break, those just, did they get wrapped under the same order because of the break? those just, did they get wrapped under the same order because of the break or...
Yes. Mass DEP right now with the II stuff, you're talking about the II stuff that they referred to, the four-to-one removal and the II mitigation stuff.
Yes.
Mass DEP right now is hot to trot with all communities. It's not just Chelmsford. They wrap that in as a result. It was like, okay, we have the ACO, we have the, we had the break, and by the way, we're going to add this stuff in as well.
And so on one of those, like, the consent order said that we had reached out to them, and we had submitted something in 2018, didn't get a response back. They sent us a response, and then we just said, we don't, we never got the response.
Yeah.
But we never asked for it either?
We didn't even know it was there until they put the initial ACO. We didn't, it's not uncommon for the DEP to not issue written responses. When we, in 20, at the end of 2017, we were submitted probably close to 40 of these plans to the various DEPs across the state. Some of the communities did issue responses, like Central Mass. I got a letter from every community. Northeast, we didn't, we submitted a number of them. We didn't get any letters that we found in record, because typically, when you get it, we would also get a copy of it, because I was on, I signed the letter to DEP. We never got any record of it in our office as well, so we can't. They say they searched their files and looked for it, but honestly, I don't think they ever sent the letter.
Okay. But we don't ask for it when we don't get a response back?
No, typically, you, no, it's not something, usually, DEP says if they don't issue a response within X amount of days, your plan is accepted. They have that written somewhere in the DEP language.
Okay.
That says that if you don't hear from them, then the plan is approved within X number of days.
Thank you.
Type of thing. Next slide.
Yep.
This is a summary of your ACOP. The initial draft one was submitted in early May to the town, and it notified the town that there was going to be an enforcement teleconference. I think it was, the date was revised, but it ended up being scheduled on June 30th with DEP and the town, and my office also participated. In between May 12th and the 30th, we issued some information to DEP, trying to get some stuff removed from the ACOP moving forward. They did review all the stuff, but they didn't have it reviewed by the 30th. They had told us that they would review it by July 16th, or no, July 21st. We issued some more supplemental information to them at their request, and we, they didn't issue what the penalty was going to be in the initial one, but in the teleconference, they did explain what the penalty was. And I have a slide later on that I'll present that whole information.
Okay.
But in the supplemental information, the town issued a counteroffer on that, and then they, in mid-August, they issued another draft copy of it with some more comments, and then at the beginning, mid-September, they issued the final one for approval to the town. And that's the one that you currently have now. The next slide. Now, this is what's in what they call the order and disposition. These are the four requirements of what the town has to do as a result of this bill. And it also has to do, this is what they also put in the other II requirements as well. The first one's within 60 days of the effective date, when once the town signs it and DEP signs it, we have to wait to see what that effective date is, so the clock doesn't start ticking until we see what the final date is on it. So we have 60 days to issue an emergency response plan, which the town already has. I'm working with DPW and Mike Vaznakas to put together the plan that he has to submit for them, so that we have, that'll be submitted without any issue.
Have we signed yet, Paul?
No. No. We're not going to sign until it comes before you this evening and for your vote, no.
They just asked today, too. I saw the email came in from DEP just asking for status. The second item is the II plan related. Like I said, back in 2018, we issued an annual plan. They've now had some questions to it now that they've looked at it, because they acknowledged in the teleconference that when we submitted this in 2018, they had no comments on the plan. Now that they've had time to start looking at it, they have put some questions. This item, again, is within 60 days of the effective date. It's just a progress report of what you guys have done. I've already provided all this information to them. They just haven't acknowledged it yet, so it's basically, I'm going to repackage everything that they've already been given and give it to them again. The next slide. As they've continued to go on with the I plan, they're making the big push on, basically, it's a push on the inflow removal and inflow investigations, which is what we talked about, I think, the last meeting, which is potential sump pumps and creating some kind of program to investigate that inflow. So the DEP, they've given a date of November 1st. Obviously, if they don't sign the ACO until October 31st, we can't, we're not going to meet the November 1st deadline. So I'm assuming that's a moving deadline based on that. But again, it's not a big effort to issue a revised II plan. We've already started talking about that with the town, and we've already started the, just the initial ideas of what we want to add to the plan that they already have, because DEP has also issued its comments more so of what they're looking for. So the biggest item is the, within a year, they're looking for a force main and pump station assessment report. And what that's going to do is, we're going to go out and look at all 41 pump stations. We're going to look at, walk the sites of the force mains. We're going to identify the dates, the installation, the material, and we're going to create a, we're going to look at what the likelihood of a future failure is and then understand what the consequences of that failure was. If this break had happened at a pump station that wasn't next to the river, DEP would have probably just issued either a notice of noncompliance or an ACO and said, okay, fix it. But again, because we're at the drinking water, that's what triggered everything else. So that's, it's, this is going to be a large effort report, and in that report, there'll be recommendations that have further investigations. This isn't going to be, we're not going to be digging anything right now. We're going to be identifying errors where it might be possible based on the material of the force mains. For example, if it's a plastic force main, we're not as concerned as we are if it's a metal force main that can fail easier than the plastic can. You don't, you're not going to typically get a hole forming in plastic as you might in metal. So we're going to have, we're going to have an entire report that has all the force main materials, again, the date of construction, the length of these force mains, and we'll create an assessment on the likelihoods of failures and consequences of the actions of what happens if there is a failure. So then, the next slide. These are basically the next steps. I put some costs together to assist with the first three items. In the ACOP is $35,000, and to do the assessment, pump station enforcement assessment report is approximately $200,000.
So you also had the sewer system evaluation survey, which was like another 350K, and I thought that was mentioned in this report somewhere. I just can't find it.
I took it out of this slide. I created this, my first one, I did have it in there, but you're correct. That is, the price was about 350,000.
Can you say more about what that is?
What that is, is they hire, we hire a subconsultant that has a camera crew that goes in, and we'll look at the first, the worst four sub areas that we identified, and we'll search for it for infiltration. The camera setup is such a camera that can go, will crawl through every line, can stop at suspected joints. It can pan and tilt around the entire thing. We'll look at manholes in the entire area as well for infiltration sources, and we'll do what's called flow isolation, which is between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM. They'll put meters into the individual pipelines, measure what the flows are coming through those times, because a lot of times, a flow that happens between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM isn't coming from the houses. It's coming from, potentially, from the groundwater. So we create, we'll do all these field investigations during March, April, and May, when the groundwater is the highest, so it's up above all the pipelines. And then we'll take all that information back. We review all the tapes that are supplied to us, looking for the same things. They, the subcontractor has a rating system of a one to five, which one being the pipe is in good condition, five being that there's imminent failure in the next five years, and the two, three, and four fall in between imminent failure and the pipe's great. And we'll have an assessment of all the pipes based on that. And then we go through a cost-effective and a value-effective procedure to see which ones are cost-effective to repair and which ones are also value-effective to repair to identify and hopefully remove infiltration. This is, an SSES is mostly for, is only for infiltration. Inflow is a whole other separate testing. And in part of the, in the annual plan, we're going to have components to, so the DEP will approve of an inflow investigation program, because inflow is a much harder component to find in the system.
So can you remind me, did I see reference to the SSES in the consent order, or was that in the 2010 report?
In one of the, it was probably in one of the earlier versions of the draft ACOP. They did talk about they wanted a planned schedule of doing an SSES. They have removed that now and just asked for a revised II plan.
So have you got, Paul, have you guys talked about whether we recommend doing the SSES, even though it's not in here?
Yeah, we're going to be doing that.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, that almost goes back to the discussion about two weeks ago regarding the...
Well, that, because I'm remembering the 600K number.
Right, exactly. Right.
Thought it was still in there.
They don't, like I said, the only reason I took that slide out was because I wanted, I wanted to focus. The break is, the ACOP is because of the break. It's gone.
No, I just was confused. I didn't know if it went away or if you were still doing it.
Like, DEP did change the language. Everything up until the final one did have, talk about an SSES. So you are right. You did see talks.
But it would still be a best practice for us to do it.
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
And does this, allocating this money, does this have to go to town meeting?
No, this would be use of the ARPA monies, American Rescue Plan Act monies. That's why there's no request at town meeting, because this isn't allowed, sewer isn't allowed use and stormwater isn't allowed use of the American Rescue Plan Act monies. So that's where we're going from, because...
Is there still, on a side note, how much ARPA money is there still left?
Well, we're going to receive 10 and a half million, $10.7 million, where I don't think we've...
But we're sort of, we've started to sort of allocate some of it.
Right, that's where we're going to have discussions on this after town meeting in about a month.
I thought we were doing it on the 4th.
We're going to schedule it on the 4th, but it's going to take place after town meeting. We're going to do public hearings.
Oh, yeah. I thought on the 4th, we were going to talk about the process for...
For scheduling the hearings, which should be after.
For how we decide.
Exactly.
And what you've already kind of allocated in your head or on paper.
Right, but those hearings would take place following town meeting.
Okay, but we're talking about it next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Didn't we have a second break, one shortly after the big one in North Chelmsford?
There was a valve, I understand, that failed over Katrina.
Katrina Road, yeah.
You thought it was going to be much bigger, and you were able to take care of it, because it wasn't as...
No, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't anything like the one that we saw. I mean, it was a nightmare of digging. Once they started digging over there to put in the bypass, it was digging that I've never seen in my life, of the groundwater being as high as it is over there and what they were fighting to do to just put a hole in the ground, basically.
How many, how many do you think potentially there's problems with right now? I mean, out of, percentage-wise, 50%?
No, I, no, because the majority of the force mains, from what I understand, and again, I have to check this, because it's been a long time since I've seen the entire system, a lot of the force mains are already plastic. They're shorter force mains. You only have the two big stations of Southwell and Katrina. There are a couple other larger stations, but the majority of the 40 pump stations in town are all, are small submersible stations with just two pumps underground. A lot, in most cases, it's a plastic force main, and a lot of cases, it's a much shorter force main than the main transmission force mains.
Those two sends everything to Duck Island, right?
Yes, those are the two force mains that go to all with everything. And that was a 12-inch force main, and I think Katrina might even be bigger, or that might be a 10-inch. I can't remember off the top of my head which ones those are. But again, this whole report will have a whole assessment of that. I mean, obviously, we probably, Southwell will drop to the lower thing, because we've already done work at Southwell. But we will also look at Southwell again to see if there's other quick-hit remediation things that we can do at that station that will further, because right now, you still have, they left the bypass point in the ground, so if, God forbid, something ever happens again, you still have another bypass point 600 feet away. So it wouldn't take anything like they had to do. Now, they could just dig that hole back up again and tap into it.
So most of the others are all like basically lift stations as opposed to...
Yeah. There's, yeah, they're much smaller comparatively. There weren't that many in Chelmsford that had the large amounts of flow. The most of them are just mostly just neighborhood flows.
I noticed, was it Vincent, is there one on Vincent Street?
Yes, there is a Vincent Street station.
I noticed one day you had about 12 trucks down there. I didn't know if they had all DPW and sewerage and a lot of whatever, but they're all working on the...
They might have just been out there doing some general maintenance on there.
Really?
Yeah. I don't know what... The next slide. This is a brief, the negotiation of the penalty. When they issued the initial one in May, they didn't fill in what the penalty was. During the teleconference, they had run through their formula and told us that the penalty was going to be $17,250. When I submitted the supplemental information to them, the town countered with an offer of that they would pay $4,000 instead of the $17,000. And then, as you can see in the final one, they came back with a number of $57,500, and the other $11,000 is contingent upon completion of the items A through D that I discussed.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Is there any motion on this one tonight, Tim?
Yeah, I say accept the plan as presented, and then we'll, you know, again, we'll...
It's not like we have a choice.
Right, exactly. We'll come, yeah.
There were no comments from town council or anything, right?
No, I mean, it's just the same, same, same general comments of council is as well, you know, same thing. Well, is there any flexibility on these issues, and we hammer those out.
Yeah, we've already at length talked to DEP, and we're going to continue to talk to DEP with getting this revised I plan in front of, because, I mean, your system is tighter than most systems in the state. They, again, without the break, they never would have come after Chelmsford for II. It just was, I, it would never have happened. They might have asked about the plan that we, they submitted, and they may have submitted comments and asked, but again, they didn't comment on it the first time when I submitted to them in 2018. They came back with no comments, and now, all of a sudden, they've had the opportunity to look at it, and conveniently, they had to come up with some comments.
So you just need a motion to approve you signing the order, basically?
Yes, yes, the, yeah, the consent order.
So I'll make a motion that in accordance with the pending Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection administrative consent order that the town of Chelmsford moves forward with the four items as presented tonight by Weston and Sampson.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent. Thank you, John.
Okay, so what I'll do from here is I'll sign the article in the morning, send it off to DEP, and then we'll come back once they sign it, and then we'll come back for the funding, formal funding approval and proceed with the order.
Okay.
In the meantime, Paul, I'll put together agreements for these items, and we'll give those to you guys. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, the next item is, we have the monthly traffic safety committee update. We have Stevie Onley from DPW and Chief Spiny to present the report this evening, and I believe Steve's first. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening. I'll be, I'll be brief. Just, again, real quickly, some of the stuff that's going on. I spent a little bit of time last week with Lieutenant Spence from the police department looking at locations on Main Street for the radar signs as well as those blinking speed limit signs. The radar signs, we're hopeful to get up by the end of this week. We picked two spots for those around kind of Burton Lane and then just sort of around the corner, heading towards Westford a little bit. DigSafe, I believe, clears tomorrow, so as weather permits, we'll get the poles in, and I believe the contract is coming towards the end of the week to get news in. We're still working over at the, with the crosswalk location, Route 40, that was requested for school bus pickup. Joe Erickson and I had a little issue with the curbing, so we got the curbing contractor coming back to reset a few pieces, and then hopefully, in the next week or two, we get that, that project wrapped up. We expanded it a little bit to the intersection of Lynn Ave, which is a very far away, just to make the ramps there ADA accessible as well. We figure if we're adding a crosswalk, we might as well repair what we have 150 feet away, so it'll all be, again, ADA accessible. One of the other things under common actions is we still have a few crosswalks, excuse me, and stop bars and such to do. Been having a little bit of trouble with the line striping contractor, as it seems like a few municipalities are having with this... a few municipalities are having with this particular contractor. Hopefully we can get that straightened out and they don't leave on us in the middle of the night again. We get, they left in the middle of a crosswalk, so we got some issues there, but hopefully we get that resolved there shortly. Some other stuff that's going on, we have three sets of rapid flash that have been on order for months. That stuff, it's sort of like buying a new car currently. I don't know if there's a piece or a part in those that is just delaying all of them. Right now, no timetable is given from our signal contractor on when he even thinks he'll get them. So whenever we get them, we'll, we'll get them installed. And just quickly, I'll touch on some of the stuff around the center. We got a lot of the signage up. The handicap spot has been signed and the symbol painted on the ground. We have a lot of the timed parking signs up. We do have a couple more to put up on the upper part of the center. We had a little bit of an issue with the machine that would wrap the band around the pole, but we're gonna mount some on some of the ornamental light poles to avoid having a bunch of poles back in the sidewalk. There a little bit of issue with that, but hopefully we get that rectified here in the next couple of days and get those installed. As far as the Ledge Road turnaround, I guess I can leave that up to Gary. He's on the call too. He can, he can speak to a lot of that. We had a meeting last week, but I'll let him elaborate on that.
Good evening, Gary Persicetti, DPW director. As you know from one of your former meetings, residents from Ledge Road had come in and had spoken to the turnaround that was proposed and wanted to see what else was done. So as a follow-up to that, and if you recall, select board member George Dixon said he would like to be a part of that. So we were able to set up a meeting with them on Friday the 17th with the residents. George Dixon came, Steve Yonlee, Scott Ludwig and myself, and we had a really very good productive meeting. Melissa Lauren, who owns what is considered Estaway, which is really her driveway, was the one that had said that, you know, buses have turned around when her mother worked for the company, her bus, only not, not for students years ago. So we went there, we looked at it, we took some quick look at it, some measurements, we had conversations about the whole thing and what the impacts would be. So how we left the meeting is it was our job to go back and shoot some grades, take some measurements and start to mark out a print. So that is in progress. Myself, Scott and Steve reviewed that briefly this morning. We're crossing the i's and dotting the t's as we speak. So our next plan is we, we need to share that with the residents again for their approval and to see what the impact and effects are of it. We also told them that we would like to stake it out because we'd like to see if the school department will allow a bus to come up and see if they can make that turn with the stakes in place. And I think if that's done, we'll have a full determination that it will work and that we would be able to proceed. There will still be work, as you know, even if they were to tell us like they had said in the meeting that, you know, we can utilize the land. I mean legally, there still has to be a taking, so all of that would have to be worked out. But we look forward to meeting with them again and to bringing them up to speed on where we believe we are. Thank you.
Any questions? Paul and Gary, do you anticipate this will be done in time for the special town meeting?
Yeah, I think we
Or we're gonna have to have another one?
No, no, we could get it on, if there's a special town meeting this fall, you know, given that we now have a plan, you know, we could get it on a warrant and then have everything in place by the time of the town meeting and, you know, which would be in late, you know, November.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Your mark.
And then next would be Chief Spenny who can give a report regarding the speed monitoring that was done on Princeton Street, traffic.
Is this part of it or do I keep going?
No, it's, it's, yeah, keep going, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. So last month, the police department did a speed study out on Princeton Street and we did two of them. We wanted to get the best snapshot we could, so we actually did both lanes. The first one was inbound traffic on Princeton Street right near the West Campus property. And that was between August 5th and August 11th. And just to remind everybody watching, again, we capture one lane at a time. It's a telephone mounted radar board system that picks up vehicles as it travels towards the board. So the first study is inbound traffic on Princeton Street. And the way it's broken down is we have 82, so out of the 11,052 vehicles that were part of this study, 82% of them were going 35 miles an hour below. 14 and a half percent were going 36 miles an hour to 40 miles an hour. 3% were going 41 to 45 and .4% were going 46 mile an hour or greater. So overall, 99% of all the vehicles in the study were going 10 miles an hour over, or 10 miles an hour or less over the 35 mile an hour posted speed zone. You can advance to the next section, please. This, this is a bar graph just showing total volume by speed. And just real quick, the, the 21 to 25 miles an hour, 342 vehicles. 26 to 30, 3,063 vehicles. 31 to 35, 5,532 vehicles. 36 to 40, 1,602. And 41 to 45, 344. And after that, it drops off to very, very few vehicles. Again, so a total of 11,052 vehicles, the average speed of all the vehicles, 32 miles an hour, again, in a posted 35 miles an hour zone. Next graph, please. This is daily volumes, again, pretty consistent. It starts on August 5th, which is a Thursday, and they're all pretty, pretty consistent with each other. We have 1,710 on Thursday, 2310 on Friday, 2,019 Saturday, 1,860 on Sunday. Monday, the 9th, was a holiday, that's why it drops down to 747. Tuesday, the 10th, 1,831. And Wednesday, the 11th, 575. So that was the first study the police department did, again, inbound on Princeton Street, August 5th through August 11th. The second study we did, August 15th through the 21st, surprisingly enough, a much greater numbers here, and we looked into it a little bit, and it appears that far greater amount of vehicles leave town, I'm sorry, come into Chelmsford, I'm sorry, leave Chelmsford on Princeton Street then return. And the reason for that is all the construction and lullow near the Rook Bridge. It appears that once people are ready to come back into town, they find a different way. So far greater totals outbound on Princeton Street. So again, looking at the graph, I broke it down into various speed blocks. So out of the 19,717 vehicles that were involved in this speed study, 35 miles an hour or below, 57%. 34% 36 to 40. 7% 41 to 45. 1.4% 46 mile an hour or higher. We're looking at all the vehicles, 98% 10 miles an hour or less over the posted speed limit of 35. Next graph, please. Again, this is total volumes by speed and it's, it's pretty consistent with the last one. It's just that the numbers are greater, but obviously the 31 to 35 category is still the highest amount. 8,772. 36 to 40, 6,788. 41 to 45, again, it drops off. Total vehicles, again, 19,717. The average speed of all those vehicles captured was 34.9 miles an hour in a posted 35 mile an hour zone. And we get to the final graph with daily totals. As you can tell, they are greater than the prior study, but very consistent. Sunday, August 15th was a Sunday, 2,652. Monday, the 16th, 3,100. Tuesday, the 17th, 3,200 and so on. Again, very consistent. Wednesday, 3,228. Again, 3,000, just over 3,000 on Thursday, the 19th, just over 3,300 on Friday, the 20th, and on Saturday it drops down to just over 1,000. So I was pleased to see the average speeds with both studies within the posted speed limit. So that was actually a, a good sign for us. So that concludes the study on Princeton Street. Again, we did both lanes so we could get a real good idea of the volume and speeds that we're seeing out there. Any questions about either one of those?
So you're not, you're not seeing anything extraordinary that would be of concern?
No, not based on this data. I mean, there are some anomalies, but they're few and far between.
Yep.
There are a few that where the vehicles are in excess of 50 miles an hour, but very, very few. So I know there is concern in that area with some of the proposals going on with that West Campus property, so that's why we did the study, but I'm very pleased with the numbers.
Is 216, is that like near the entrance to both of those?
Yeah, it's right, it's right. Both studies were, we had to pick the closest telephone pole for either travel lane, so we picked the closest ones right near that entrance to that property.
Okay. So that's the way you go around the turn as far as the inbound traffic, right? So would that
Yes.
Would that slow down the traffic by itself, Jimmy, or would that
The inbound was prior to the curb, so that, that definitely is part of it, which is a good thing, that people are slowing down prior to the curb. I did want to make one comment before I finished on Ledge Road. As the board is aware, the police department has put an officer on Ledge Road now for the better part of a month, monitoring that school bus pickup and drop off. Today, there's been no issues with that. I've personally gone out there myself to observe it. Although the trucks are up and down that street, there's no safety issue with the stop itself. The bus stop actually cuts right across Ledge Road on Dunstable Road. Traffic cannot move. So we've been up there a month, the officers have written reports, I've gone out there myself. There, there is no issue with the stop. The reason I'm bringing this up is I just cannot sustain that officer out there any longer. I have some other pressing issues in town, namely the high school. The front lot is extremely congested with, with the volume of vehicles. In the morning, I need to pivot that officer in there. I have received some civilian concerns over the high school entrance in the morning, so I, I really need to get that addressed. I wouldn't move the officer from ledge if I thought there was a safety issue with that bus stop. I do not believe there is. Other than the officer being there and observing, they have not been required to take any action. So I, I think there's some other areas those resources need to be directed. I just wanted to let the board know in case a resident reaches out inquiring why the officer is not there.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Anything else?
Ledge Road, it will continue to be a priority for us, so we are hitting that daily. Every day we're hitting Ledge Road, so.
Yep.
Back to the Princeton Street, I have talked to some of the people on Harvard and Dartmouth and I asked some questions about that. They didn't seem like there was really much of a concern as far as them getting out of their streets under Princeton or seeing people who speed, so that does sort of fall in line with your report, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
So the next agenda item was for the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. We decided we're going to vote on October 4th. My understanding is Christina did invite the candidates to come and talk to us on October 4th, with tonight being a backup if they couldn't come. So is there anyone who would like to speak to us this evening instead of October 4th? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on. Paul, were it town manager reports?
Yeah, thank you. I just have three items under my report this evening and I'll be brief. The first one is, is the board's aware, this coming Wednesday, that the town is issuing debt as a result of the actions taken at the spring annual town meeting. Finance Director John Souza will be overseeing a debt issuance of $5.29 million of general obligation bonds. Related to that, we have received a ratings report from Standard and Poor's Credit Rating Services. Much like our annual audit, this is almost like another set of independent assessment of the town's financial operations and, and they shared this with the board when it was released and I'll just summarize it real briefly this evening for those in attendance and it is online with the packet. But the Standard and Poor's global ratings assigned its AA+ long-term rating to the town and our outlook has remained stable. So they've given us a favorable bond rating, which is the next level below a AAA, which is the highest level, which has been, is said consistent in a long-term rating for the town. To summarize the credit review, I'll just read one paragraph from the report that Chelmsford is a primarily residential community in northeastern Massachusetts, just south of New Hampshire. The AA+ rating reflects the town's very strong economy with access to Boston's labor markets and proactive management practices that afforded it positive results during the pandemic. Rising pension and other post-employment benefits could potentially stress the town's finances along with rising public safety costs if revenues from new economic growth were to stall over a prolonged timeframe. Our ratings and stable outlook reflect that we believe the town's strong management, very strong economy and budgetary flexibility will allow Chelmsford to weather the prolonged potential longer-term economic and financial shock of the pandemic over our two-year outlook period. Our view of the town's rating stability is further supported by the fact that property taxes, which we view as less economically sensitive in the near term, account for the majority of its, of its revenues. So again, what will happen next is the, the bond sale will be at market on Wednesday. We'll immediately notify you of the bond results and then John Souza will be here next Monday, you know, for your formal approval of the bond sale.
Paul, the process on that, is it? I'm trying to remember how the last time we did this, did they bid on the interest rate?
Yes, it's, it's low, it's, it's the lowest net interest cost because what, as you know, they, they often have to put cash in and so forth, but basically they're rated on the low, the low net, you know, total interest cost over the life of the loans.
I'll ask because it's gonna be interesting with all the talk coming out of Washington about higher tax rates. There's been this like huge rush to municipal bonds over the last month.
Yeah.
Be interesting to see if these rates really reflect the interests that we're seeing in the other markets, but.
Yep, so again, we're, we're sort of hitting it at a good time because I don't know what happens if the federal government defaults at some point and all the other potential instability, but we're, you know, like I said, timing is everything and so I think we're all set for Wednesday. So that's the first item I have.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
This, do we pay for that?
Oh, yes.
Oh, we do, okay.
Oh, yes.
They do it out of the kindness of their heart?
Yeah, it's, it's like around $12,000 for a ratings report.
Okay, I don't know if it was like a credit report, you can get one free every year?
Oh, no, no, you don't get anything free from Standard and Poor's.
$12,000 really, I mean, to, for them to come out and re-comment on your, your credit worthiness is 12 grand's a drop in the bucket.
Right, yeah, but, and, and, yeah, they basically, you're, it's now done by Zoom because of COVID, but, you know, you, you have two analysts who are, who are basically going through a series of questions and analysis and John Souza submits reams of documents ahead of time regarding our debt service, our financial reports, our audit reports and so forth. So again, you know, Wednesday morning, we'll, we'll know the results. So that, that's, that's good news. The next item I, I have is the update on the redistricting, repres ding process. Here's where it stands as of today. Last Thursday, the legislature sent, approved, both the House and the Senate approved and sent to the governor a special law, basically, why I say special law is because the law becomes effective upon enactment, but then it gets rescinded at the, at the first of the next year. So basically it's a, it's, it's meant as a temporary because this is an extraordinary Massachusetts history process on redistricting and repres ding. So what's happening this year is we know they're flip-flopping it. Basically, the legislature's gonna do the redistricting and then the communities, municipalities will have until December 15th to do its redistricting. And how, how it came out in the wash at the end is you can have your, you can have your precincts different than your legislative districts in our case. Let's say we have three or four state reps or two, whatever number. You can have different precincts than, than your state rep lines, but the problem is if you do that, then within a precinct, you're gonna have subdivisions. In other words, you'd have to have precinct 2A and 2B because you'd have different ballots because if they, if they cross the state rep lines. because if they, if they cross the state rep lines. So, long story short, what's going to happen in practical, this is all done by census block, which are, are, you know, really small census neighborhood data, and that's how they'll create the districts. Because the Massachusetts Constitution requires the reps to live in a district one year prior to the election, this will get done in the next month, for sure. As close you can be to anything of certainty in the legislature, this is one of them, because it directly affects them. When I met on Friday with the president, executive director of the Mass Municipal Association, I asked him, well, is the governor going to sign this bill? And the answer is yes. They expected the governor will sign this, but they did leave enough room that if he didn't sign it, they had, they can override it. So this will become law, and basically, what we, what we'll do is, we'll sit tight, even though the Secretary of State's office has given us the files now. And in a couple of days, we're going to get user-friendly census data that's, that's coming up from those same files that were released last, last month. But in essence, in practicality, we'll wait until, you know, and discuss this with the town clerk and so forth, about how do we really proceed with this? Because at the end of the day, you vote the precincts. It's the select board who's going to vote this. But I think for all practical purposes, let's wait and see what comes out of the legislative redistricting, and then the precincting can work. We do know that, and there's also a second wild card, we do know that, that the town needs more precincts because of the limitation on precinct size. So we have to go above the nine. And as we discussed, 11 probably works better than 10. But the other thing that we'll have to factor in is that these precincts have to last for a decade. So therefore, if there is to be a change in, in the zoning for the UMass West Campus project, and let's say that were to move forward, you could be talking 1,000 residents living in that area if the 400-unit plan were to be approved. So with that being the case, that'll be factored into consideration over the next month as well. So again, we have till December 15th. What we expect will happen is, within the next two to three weeks, the districts will get announced. Then there'll be, you know, some public input, then there'll be a vote, and then the governor will act, whether they're enacted into law. If not, then the legislature will act for an override. And then by November, the first Monday in November, there will be a new districts, and then again, we'll immediately pivot from there to precincting. Again, the, the data that we did see from the Secretary of State's office shows that we can have sensible precinct lines, as we have currently today, you know, bisected by 495, and, you know, so forth. So anyway, so that's where we stand at this point, is laws been passed, waiting for the governor's action, followed by the release of the precinct proposed redistricting, followed by, again, legislative enactment, governor action, then followed by repres ding. So it's all going to move quickly over the next four to five weeks.
Well, one of the things I remember from 10 years ago was families found themselves sending their kids to different elementary schools or middle schools because of the repres ding. Is this anything, I don't, I just don't know how this process works. Do we get public input, or school committee input, or anything like that?
The school committee sets its own precincts for schools. It's not, it's not based on the redistricting.
Well, there were letters that went out that said it was because the board repres dined the town. There were different lines drawn.
They may have chosen to do, move the school lines as a result of that, but there's no, there's no nexus, there's no connection, meaning requirement, that they have to redistrict the schools based on our precinct lines.
Okay.
No, there's, there's nothing in state law.
They're not related at all.
They're not related at all. In fact, what's really driving them, quite frankly, is neighborhood populations. And, you know, they, this, believe me, it's one of those things that the school committees do not like to do, because you always anger somebody by, by changing the school districts in terms of, you know, which elementary school, and even, you know, and not to jump to Wednesday's meeting, but even that's a consideration in terms of, if there is to be the development at, at West Campus, where do those children go to school? But no, that's really, it's really driven, there's nothing tied.
There's nothing else in this process that has to happen, or other stakeholders?
No. So it's not as if the select board would adopt, adopt different precinct lines, it would affect where children go to school. That's separate and done by the school committee. They may choose to adopt the precinct lines as a convenience, and who knows? We'll see what they do going forward. So, but no, there's no, there's no, there's no required tie-in to that. So that's where we are on repres ding. And then the last item we have on here is discussing a possible select board meeting on October 25th. We know we're going through a series of meetings, you know, consecutive Mondays, and in fact, culminated by next Monday. But when I spoke with the chair, your, your next meeting on October 4th is, is your, you know, only meeting in October, at this point, because the 11th is Columbus Day, town meeting is the 18th, Monday. We didn't schedule a regularly scheduled meeting on the 25th, because at the time, we set the schedule, we didn't know how many night sessions town meeting would go. It appears more than likely that town meeting won't go a third session. And given the, you know, the, the chance that we may need to call a special town meeting warrant, as well as other items that are falling, you know, over time, it would be quite a stretch to go from October 4th to four weeks till November 1st without a meeting. So I think we're just going to ask you to save the, the date for October 25th for a select board meeting, and then as we get closer, we'll, we'll know better. I will notify the board that, looking to the end of the year, because it's five Mondays in November, you'll meet the 1st, the 15th, and the 29th. And then in December, you only meet twice. You know, we don't meet around the holidays, and, you know, the Christmas and New Year's holiday. So, so basically, you know, you get this anomaly with October, with the fact that November has five Mondays, the first being the first of the month. So that's why we just ask you to hold the 25th, in the event that we have to have a, a meeting regarding a special town meeting warrant, and/or other things that may arise, rather than going four weeks without a meeting.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
So the next item is the recommendations on the fall town meeting warrant articles. I see Sam is here, and Trish Durzis and Jim Lane are in the Zoom room, so my suggestion would be we take that set of articles out of order. So we don't, which is number what?
It's number 18 through 20.
Is there any further discussion on number 18? Sam, you're here for number 20, right? Okay. And the finance committee voted in favor of this, 6-0 with one absent.
Want a motion?
If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant article 18.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, 4-0, one absent. This is just modifying the language for the, in the event that there's a tie. Was there any other questions or discussion? You okay, Pat?
Well, I'm wondering if this is kind of related to article 20, because...
We can go to the article 20 presentation first, if you'd like.
Yeah, I think I would, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Is that okay, Sam?
Thank you for waiting. Very enjoyable meeting.
Very patient.
No problem, no problem.
So can I just ask, is that what's in the beginning of our packet tonight? The piece that talks about the charter and everything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Sam Chase, Chairman of the 2017 Charter Review Committee. And I did watch your meeting last week, and understood that there was a question, the board had a question on article 20 relating to the change that we made back in 2017 to Charter Section 2.5D. And correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, but I think the, the question was that you wanted to understand the reasoning behind the actions that we took. Is that, is that correct?
So my, my comment was that I had heard Trish and the finance committee briefings say several times that her predecessor had presented this to the Charter Review Committee, and it didn't get incorporated. So I was just asking why.
All right.
But feel free, go.
No, that's fine, and I'll just...
Go forward, because I've got some good material here.
This won't take very long. I'll just walk you through the logic, and I think it might be a little clearer to you after, after the discussion. So the slide you're on now, this is just a little background as to what the 2017 Charter Review Committee did, and what our charter was, was essentially to review the charter and recommend changes to the select board. And as a result of any recommendations that we made, the recommendations then would move to town meeting, and the action would be taken at town meeting. If approved, then the actions would be moved to the voters. And there were some that were, had to be taken up by the state legislature. So I guess the takeaway on this particular slide is that the Charter Review Committee, or Charter Review Committees in general, do not have any independent power to make changes. Our charter is simply to recommend changes, and then those are taken up by the, by the appropriate approving authorities. Next slide, please. What is our process? You see it here, just very basic. We read through the charter, section by section, have the discussion, decide whether changes, whether to, or not to recommend changes. As a result of that activity, which lasted from, I'd say, July 2016 until the end of August 2017, just a little over 12 months, we did present a final report to the select board on September 20th. Everything that I am telling you now, and I will tell you throughout this presentation, can be found in our report, which is on the town website. The specifics, if you want to go to the report at some point, the specific discussion can be found, starting on page 23 of the report. So what happened to cause us to take action on Section 2.5D? On May 9th, 2017, the town clerk, who at the time was Honorina Maloney, she came before the Charter Review Committee, and what she wanted to do was change Section 2-4. Section 2-4 is the elections section. And the request was, I would like to change, I'd like to have you folks recommend a change to Section 2-4, to require a minimum of five write-in votes to qualify a write-in candidate for election. So you have the election, the day of the election, write-in gets written in, and she wanted to make it so that that person could not be elected unless they had attained a five-vote minimum. Okay? That's what she wanted. So she made that request, and we asked some questions. And in the ensuing discussion, next slide, please, Ms. Maloney also told us that, at this particular time, we were having a tremendous difficulty in filling all the town meeting seats. And that was even with write-in candidates. Now, to be fair, the number of write-ins back then wasn't what you see today. You get, the last two or three years seems to be a tremendous uptick in the number of write-in votes. But back in the 2016, 2017 timeframe, there weren't that many, but there were some. So even with the write-ins that we had at that particular point in time, we had, I believe it was three precincts at the time, that lacked the full complement of town meeting reps. So we took what the town clerk told us, and we said, you know, she's asked us to recommend a five-vote minimum for write-ins to be elected, but then she's also told us that we can't fill the seats. So that didn't make too much sense to us. We said, if we're having trouble filling seats, why do we want to impose a vote, a minimum vote requirement for write-ins? So we did not make a recommendation. Next slide, please, to change Section 2-4. So Section 2-4 today reads just the way it read in 2017. There was no change. So right now, there is no minimum number of votes required for a write-in candidate to get elected to office. So that disposed of that matter. So the next thing we did, of course, because we're going through the charter in sequence, we get to Section 2.5. 2.5 is vacancies, it addresses vacancies. And I'll talk a little about that in the middle, in, in a minute. But when we looked at 2.5, 2.5D says, there is, or said at the time, there is a 10-vote minimum for a write-in candidate who was defeated in the prior election to move up from the reserve list to fill a vacancy. So 2-4 says, no minimum to get elected. 2.5 says, but if you were a write-in candidate at the last election, in order to move up on the reserve list, you have to have 10 votes. So again, we said, we're having trouble filling the seats. We have no minimum to be elected. It didn't seem to us to make that much sense to keep that 10-vote minimum for a write-in to move up, to take over a vacancy. So we decided to recommend to the select board and the town meeting that they eliminate that 10-vote requirement in Section 2.5. And at that point, we felt we had some consistency between the two sections. So that is the, that is the thought process that we followed, and that's the action that we took. So now, next slide, please. So now before you, you have Article 20 for this particular session. And what Article 20 is seeking to do is essentially to reinstate the language that was taken out in 2017. So the registrars would like to put back the language requiring a 10-vote minimum for a reserve list write-in candidate to move up to take a vacancy. Okay? Section 2.5, next slide, please. Section 2.5 talks only about vacancies in town meeting rep seats, which this is a post-election section. Section 2.4 deals with the election itself, getting people elected to office. 2.5 says, here's what happens after people have been elected to their seats, and then, within their term, they vacate. So subsection A of 2.5 talks about resignations. B talks about those members who move out of town, or move out of the precinct. And subsection C talks about members who don't make the minimum number of required sessions within a calendar year. They can be removed. So how do you fill vacancies that are occasioned by these three situations is what Section 5 covers. So, next slide, please, and last slide. So just to reiterate, and I'm sure the town clerk and/or Mr. Lane may have something to say in addition to what I'm saying, I don't want to speak for them as to their reasons for asking for this particular warrant article. But I just want to make it clear that warrant Article 20 has nothing to do with electing people to office, nothing to do. That's Section 2.4. What, what section, what this particular warrant article seeks to do is to put back the requirement that in order for a write-in reserve list candidate to move up, to take over a vacancy, they want to put back the 10-vote minimum. So that's the end of my presentation. So any questions?
The previous clerk's request was actually for the elections section, not for this one.
Correct. Had nothing to do with this section.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose I could have just said that at the beginning and saved all that talk.
This is very helpful.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for Sam, or Trish, or Jim?
That was very clear, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Does Jim want to chime in, or he's good?
I don't know.
I'm good, Ken. I think Sam did a good job. And Trish can certainly talk to this much better than I can. But the other thing that, that happens currently is, it puts, when you have people that get, you know, get votes, it creates, you know, if they get one vote or two votes, whatever it is, it puts quite a bit of extra... or two votes, whatever it is, it puts quite a bit of extra work on the clerk's office. They have to track all that down, and then they have to, you know, it still has to be recorded and everything else. The 10 minimum would reduce that. And Trish, you can elaborate on exactly what goes on in the clerk's office that increases that workload, but, you know, that's one part I just wanted to make sure didn't get missed.
Sure. So yeah, it's just really, it's inefficient because of all the single votes, trying to determine, number one, who they are. Number two, were they even aware that their name was written in? Number three, are they interested in the seat at all? And then there's no process in place for prioritizing those single votes because they all basically are ties. So there's really no way to even move them up into the reserve. So having the minimum provides an opportunity that they seriously were competitive write-in candidates, not just random people writing other people in. So that's really, we took the change in the Charter for a test drive. We found it quite cumbersome, and we were just hoping to be able to revert it back to the 2017 version, just so that our actual reserve lists are of people that were really interested in the position. And by having the minimum, it also, another thing that hasn't gotten brought up, is it removes an incentive to write-in versus take nomination papers out, because it's an important job. And candidates that are serious about running for town meetings, they pull papers, they go out, they meet their neighbors, they get signatures, they turn them in, we certify them, they get their name on the ballot. Anybody who's interested in, you know, competing in a write-in campaign would still do a similar process. They would recruit their friends, family, neighbors to write their name in, so that it would show that they were serious about the position. Where the way it sits right now, again, many of the people that we contacted during the past elections didn't even know that their name was on, was written in by somebody. So that gets a little cumbersome.
Did you have a question about how this relates to 19? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I kind of do, because, so I totally agree with Article 20 then. But Article 19 means that you can get one or two votes and be elected, but if you only get one or two votes and somebody resigns from your precinct, you can't, you know, it's like a double standard, I guess.
Basically, if nobody else runs, and only one person writes in their, you know, writes in their name, and that's the only candidate we have, we don't want to limit not being able to fill the position by someone who actually wrote their name in. But, I mean, so elections, it's different, because say, library trustee, we had a vacancy, and nobody pulled papers, and you really, you know, you want somebody to fill that position. And if you've got somebody who has a couple of people write their name in, you don't want to not be able to fill it if they don't have 10 votes. So there's a big difference between the election piece versus the vacancy piece, I think. I don't know if that clarified it at all for you, Pat. I'm sorry.
I don't know if I agree with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, again, it's, I did, again, that's probably Honorina sought to change that for some reason. I didn't see that as an issue as much as I do the amount of work it takes to maintain that reserve list and to actually make the reserve list functional. As far as an election goes, we did have some situations in the past where in certain precincts, we'd only have a couple of people get votes, and those people did fill those positions. So even though the average over the last 10 years was, a write-in campaign was 18 votes, there were situations where people got voted in with three or five votes. So, and that was because it was names written in on the ballot, and they got elected versus the people that didn't get elected. How do we maintain that list? Jim, do you have any other way to explain it?
No, I totally understand it. I just don't agree with it.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Right.
Okay, is there any other discussion on, let's stick with Article 20, on Article 20.
I'm going to do Article 20. Okay, Article 21.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant Article 20.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent. Okay, let's go back to 19.
Okay. I do have one other comment about why we put Article 19 forward, if I might. The reason we put Article 19 forward was really just for the ability to not have to meet in person to fill any vacancies. That was what 19 was all about. So, because the previous language just said that we have to call the town meeting members together at a convenient place, so we weren't really addressing the minimum vote in Section 2-4. We were only addressing the fact that we wanted to be able to send ballots to the town meeting reps so that we get a larger percentage of response versus trying to meet in person prior to town meeting and, you know, getting a smaller number of town meeting reps showing up to vote to fill that vacancy. But that was why we put that forward.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I totally agree with that. I mean, I think that does help. I just feel like it's a conflict between those two sections. But, I mean, I'm going to support this.
Yeah, because this isn't a change to the part you have a conflict with.
Exactly.
Yeah. All right. You brought that up, and I'm like, wait a minute, that's not...
That's right, yeah.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant Article 19.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's four in favor, one absent. Thanks for waiting, guys.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, Jim.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Sam.
You want to go to the top, Paul?
Yeah, let's go to number one. Maybe two. Number two. Yeah, there's no vote required under Article 1, no action. It's just town offices' reports. Article 2 is the Cemetery Improvement Development Fund. It's part of the consent agenda. $50,000 for the ongoing improvements at the Pine Ridge Cemetery. Finance Committee voted 6-0 with one absent.
So I'll make a motion to recommend Article 2.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Article 3 is a Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Fund, $5,758 appropriation. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
I make a motion to recommend approval of Article 2.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor.
Article 5 is the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. It's, again, it's placing the interest earnings into the fund. The amount appropriated with $83,045. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 4.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Article 5 is the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. It's the transferring of the $16,250 that had been received by the town through the Inclusionary Housing Bylaw into the Affordable Housing Stabilization Fund. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 5.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Article 6 is no action. Article 7 is unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year. This is raising appropriate $260 for the payment of a prior-year invoice for work that was performed for the police detail, which we paid to the Town of Drakehead for work that was performed on June 8th, 2016, and was invoiced to the Town of Chelmsford on October 31st, 2016. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
Make a motion to recommend approval of Article 7.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you. No action on Article 8, amending the current year operating budget. Article 9 is the roadway and sidewalk construction. The request is to transfer $1,987,640 from free cash to fund roadway and sidewalk construction. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 9.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Article 10 is no action. Article 11 is the PFAS remediation. The request is the transfer of $600,000 from free cash to remediate the PFAS at 54 Richardson Road. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
Make a motion to approve warrant Article 11.
Second.
Any discussion? Are you abstaining? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Do you need to abstain? You're not abstaining from this one?
He needs to abstain here, but doesn't need to abstain at a town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Which is weird.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's how the law works, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. So four in favor, one absent.
Paul, did you say he doesn't at a town meeting?
Right. He doesn't at a town meeting, yeah.
Oh, he should abstain here.
He should abstain here. He should not, he does not, he doesn't need to abstain at a town meeting.
It's 3-0.
Let me take the vote again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Okay. Three in favor, one abstention, and one absent.
Article 12 is a Freeman Lake weed control. Would appropriate, raise and appropriate $65,000 to treat the weed issues at Freeman Lake. Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one abstention.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 12.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, and one absent.
I swam there once. Does that matter?
Article 13 is the transfer of free cash to reduce the fiscal year of '22 property tax levy. The amount requested is $2 million in free cash. The Finance Committee voted 2 to 4 against this with one member absent.
Do they have a reason?
Well, Virginia and I were on the call, the call, and watched the meeting. Basically, the Finance Committee felt that they were, that the town had considerably unmet capital needs, such as fire apparatus and building maintenance, and therefore they thought that one-time money should be used for those purposes, as opposed to using it to reduce the levy.
Is that a good summary?
That was part of it. There was a philosophical discussion about whether this is going to be a habitual thing, and I think that Paul had explained that we had a tough year last year, and so we were going to continue that this year, and then the idea would be to decrement the application of free cash to the tax levy, so that we don't get this whiplash effect. But I don't think anybody has ever suggested that we get reckless with the stabilization fund, you know, as a matter of philosophy.
I mean, I think every town meeting, fall town meeting I've gone to, there's been some sort of opportunity to return to the taxpayers.
Yeah, I mean, the most notable one was Paul Bargazzi a year ago.
Yeah.
And town meeting sorts it out. I mean...
Exactly.
They're going to come.
Right. And one of the people that, you know, presented the argument in favor was that it was town meeting that voted to do it last year, and this was more of a progression than a longstanding philosophy.
I mean, Paul, I know we've said to you, we're concerned about the levy limit and the burden on the taxpayers.
Right.
Was there any, when you came up with the $2 million, and this sort of the way to dull this out, did you have a formula in mind, or did you?
No, I mean, this was an anomaly. We all, you know, we've seen the free cash numbers over the years. Some years it's less than a million, some years it's 1.42. This, it caught, and it's caught not just us, it caught the federal government, it caught the state government, it caught some other cities and towns that are dealing with the same issue. It's just a struggle. As we noted, as you stated earlier, there's no wrong answer. The question is, what do we do with these monies? And we struggle because, you know, I agree, and the Finance Committee is right, we should use one-term monies for one-time expenditures. The question is, is you weigh the impacts of the pandemic versus the one-time costs out there that nobody wants to fund, in some cases. For example, you know, we've known for a couple of years that the tennis courts and basketball courts at the schools are in tough shape, and that's a $1.2 million project. And the problem is, it never makes the priority list of the school committee, because the school committee focuses inside the building. But yet, we had the summer in Georgia members, that, remember, we had the calls from the CYBL about the horrible conditions of the outdoor courts, and facilities and DPW sort of patched it and carried it over. And then we've got the other issue that we're struggling with, is, you know, about fire apparatus. And the Finance Committee noted last Thursday, well, we've got three years in a row, we're going to have a three-quarter plus million-dollar fire apparatus, which eats into basically about 25, 20% to 25% of the town's capital budget, and therefore forestalls other things. And then you've got issues like the municipal parking lot, that's going to come up for consideration at some point, perhaps. You know, so it's those type of things where, do you use the money for those things, or do you apply it, as we did last year, saying, hey, look, this is a, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime experience for all of us. Given what we knew at the time a year ago, we applied the $2 million to reduce the levy, and it provided $140 of tax relief for the average single-family property tax bill. Right now, we, it's, we still don't know quite our way out of the woods with this pandemic, and we know there are residents that are suffering from it. And so then the question is, is do we do the same, as you said last year, and keep that 140, and then, as you said, work our way out of it by perhaps, you know, in a year or two, because we don't believe it's sustainable going forward.
So was that your rationale when you recommended using it for the tax levy versus investing it into one of these other needs?
And it was listening, and it really was, I was heavily influenced, I'll say this, by listening to the board's concerns. There were at least three members of this board who expressed to me that, look, we're concerned in our efforts we can do to reduce the levy. And you folks are the chief executive elected officials in the town, and therefore, I think in many ways, you hear more from the typical resident than I do in the building, quite frankly. I mean, we see this on a number of issues. So therefore, you know, that's where, when it sort of came to the 50-50 coin, I fell on the direction that was presented to me from the Select Board. But, and as I said last week, there's no wrong answer. Whatever the town decides to do is the right answer. But it's, you know, it's a struggle we always have, as we know.
Okay. Thank you for that input. So I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 13.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
And then Article 14 is the last free cash article, and this would appropriate $1 million into the General Stabilization Fund. Finance Committee recommended 6 to 0 to transfer whatever balance remains at this point of the town meeting after the other articles are acted upon to put funds into the stabilization fund.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 14.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Four in favor, one absent.
Okay, thank you. Article 15 is rescinding unexpendable appropriations from the Community Preservation Committee, a consent agenda item. Finance Committee recommended 5-0 with one abstention and one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of Article 15.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Ken, are you voting?
Oh, sorry, aye. Just reading the next one.
Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you. Article 16 is to rescind the $75,000 authorized by an issued borrowing authority for the town's purchase of the Warren Pole property. Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 with one abstention and one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend warrant Article 16 for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, and one absent.
Article 17 is a charter amendment that I brought forward, a result of the change in state law that changes the elected composition of the housing authority to make our charter consistent with the practice and requirements of state law, to basically have the fourth member be the town-appointed tenant board member in accordance with the new state law.
So the Finance Committee recommended 6-0 with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant Article 17.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Article 21 is a bylaw that I brought forward, which would amend the town's general bylaws by prohibiting meetings taking place during elections. There's a little bit of uncertainty, I guess. confusion, uncertainty, I guess, as to whether with early voting, whether that's considered an election hour. I have not heard back from town council on this. So because of that, the Finance Committee held off voting this. Um, I, we can hold off. I, I don't, well, we can hear what town council, but clearly the intent is, is not to have no meetings for a week or whatever the early voting period is. It's to have no meetings during the election night for the election day. And if need be, I may have clarifying language from town council or an opinion to that point. But that's the intent here. The intent is not to prohibit, you know, municipal meetings during early voting run-up to, to the election day.
Do you want to take, wait?
We can do this next, we can vote this next week, right?
We can vote anytime before a town meeting.
Yeah, anytime before a town meeting.
So you want to put that one on hold?
Yeah, hopefully I'll have that, yeah, next week.
Okay.
Okay. Article 22 is the demolition delay property inventory language brought forth by the Historical Commission, um, which, again, amends the bylaw to provide for an inventory of a building or structure to be demolished prepared by historic preservation consultant. Finance Committee voted five to one with one absent in favor.
I'll make a motion, um, motion to recommend approval for warrant, Article 22.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Articles 23 through 29, as we know, are all to deal with the zoning bylaw amendment pertaining to stormwater design guidelines. Article 23, the first one, amends Article 5, subsection 5 regarding adding language encouraged use of low-impact design or green infrastructure. Finance Committee voted six, zero with one abstention. And the planning board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant, Article 23.
Sergeant.
Any discussion?
Do I have a question? Planning board, how could...
The zoning article.
Yeah, but still, seven, zero, that should be it.
No, no, they have an alternate.
They vote?
She did, that night.
Okay, I didn't think they, they voted if, if they had a full, okay.
That's how they did it.
That's how they did it.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Get a tie there.
You could. Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
Answers all your questions for the other articles, too, right?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 24, again, the stormwater design zoning bylaw amendment, adding language that unless a portion of a project has been designed specifically as a LID stormwater management feature, curb cut, sawtooth, or other curb cut treatments are allowed. Fine, oh, sorry, Finance Committee voted six and zero in favor with one absent. Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant, Article 24.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four in favor, one absent.
Thank you. Article 25, again, the stormwater design zoning bylaw guidelines pertaining to disturbing limits of one acre or more. Finance Committee voted six to zero with one absent. And Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant, Article 26.
25.
25, sorry.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four with one absent.
Thank you. Uh, next article is, uh, Article 26? Yeah, 26, yeah. Is the Stormwater Design Guidelines Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining to landscape runoff mitigation. Finance Committee voted six to zero with one absent. And the Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant, Article 26.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four with one absent.
Article 27, Stormwater Design Guidelines Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining, regarding changing language to site plan, Massachusetts DEP, by changing the language to management standards and stormwater handbook and deleting the word policy, and then adding language saying for a full list of design requirements referred to the Chelmsford DPW stormwater management regulations. Finance Committee voted six to zero with one absent. Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh...
27.
Yeah, 27. I'll make a motion to approve, to recommend approval for warrant, Article 27.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Four with one absent.
Article 28 is...
We're almost done, guys.
Almost done. The zoning amendment of stormwater design guidelines. This, this has to do with adding a new subsection pertaining to low-impact development site planning. Finance Committee voted six to zero, I'm sorry, four to one with one absent, one abstaining. And the Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant, Article 28.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four and one absent.
And then the final, Stormwater Design Guidelines Zoning Bylaw Amendment pertaining to landscaping. Um, Finance Committee voted six to zero with one absent. The Planning Board voted seven to zero with one absent.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of warrant, Article 29.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four with one absent.
And then the last article pertains to the Dunshire Drive easement. Um, this would basically authorize the town through the, through the select board to acquire the easements on the properties regarding the, basically the replacement of the Dunshire Drive culverts. The Finance Committee recommended five to zero with one abs, one abstaining and one absent. The Planning Board voted seven to zero. Actually, I didn't vote that because they don't vote on easements.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for warrant, Article 30.
Sergeant.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four with one absent. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, that brings us to liaison reports and referrals. Pat, do you have anything tonight?
I just have one thing this evening. Um, last week I went to a ribbon cutting that Lisa Maroni conducted for Cut to the Chase, which you may recall, they previously were located in Central Square. They have moved to 118 Chancellor Street, right between KJ's Cafe and Domino's Pizza. Um, it's a very impressive operation they have there. And so we, I'm sure the whole town is glad that they've stayed in town. And they will be there for a while, I'm sure, and very successfully. So, so congratulations to them.
Thank you. George, do you have anything?
I just want to acknowledge the passing of a lady who was a town meeting rep for about 14, 15 years last week, Pat Magno, from West Chancellor. And it was kind of hidden in the paper and everything, so I don't know. But anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge it. She was a nice lady and she attended everything. And she, you know, participated very heavily, so. That's it, thank you.
She'll be acknowledged at town meeting as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ken, do you have anything?
I'm good.
And I don't have anything this evening either. I don't see any press. So I'll take another motion.
I'll make a motion to...
Adjourn.
Adjourn? I was going to say resign. Why would you say resign?
Take it, take it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sergeant.
We have a second at 8:38 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four.
I can't take that back.